All right, how's everybody? Good? Well, we tried to have one live meeting and we did, but I think it's best that we're back remote for right now. But who knows, that could change pretty soon. Our next city council meeting will be the 23rd, so we'll see what happens over the next week. Ms. Kent, are you here and you're ready to go?
I'm here, ready to go.
All right, there's a lot of people here. So, we'll be all right. I would ask that after the pledge of allegiance, that we just remain silent for a moment and keep Sean Connolly and his family in our prayers. Mr. Connolly passed away last week. He was a policeman for the Beverly Police Department for quite some time. He went out a few years ago and many of us do know him and are able to call him a friend. So please, thank it, keep him in your thoughts and prayers. So, call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council, Monday, November 9th, 2020. Ms. Kent, could you please call the roll?
Ames? Feldman?
Here.
Flaherty?
Yeah.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Here.
Houseman?
Here.
Rand?
Here.
Rattando?
Here.
And Guanci?
I am here. Councilor Houseman, could you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance? And then just keep quiet for a minute, everybody, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. So, let me see my list here. Mayor Cahill is here, so why don't we... Before our resolution, I would like to introduce to everybody Ms. Irina Keith. Mayor Cahill is going to give a little introduction. Oh, I forgot to do something. I forgot to read the script. Mayor Cahill, I'll be right back to you, okay?
Sure.
Script for remotely conducted city council meetings, Monday, November 9th, 2020. As a preliminary matter, this is Paul Guanci, President of the Beverly City Council. Before beginning the meeting, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the City of Beverly and livestreamed by BevCam on both Channel 99 and via BevCam's YouTube channel. I'm confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Everybody good? Love those nods. Introduction to the remote meeting. Good evening. This open meeting of the Beverly City Council is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspended the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. This order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate alternative public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting does not have public participation, thus we have no public hearings. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised live and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you are participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by me to reduce background noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking has finished before speaking, so we can clearly hear all participants. In addition, because of the remote meeting, I'm going to read Rule 22 of the Rules and Regulations of the Beverly City Council. Rule 22. All subcommittees of the councils shall cause records to be kept of their proceedings. They shall report by ordinance, order, or resolve unless otherwise provided by law. No subcommittee shall act by separate consultation and no report of that as a body shall be received unless agreed and subcommittee actually notified and assembled for the purpose in hand and signed by a majority of the councils of that subcommittee. Every subcommittee to which any subject may be referred shall report thereon as soon as possible after full consideration thereof and a vote thereof. However, if the council may by majority vote or any matter pending before the subcommittee to be acted upon, the subcommittee at its next meeting and/or to be forthwith returned to the full council. That just simply says we don't refer things to committees. We can take votes on the floor. And we need a majority vote of the council to be able to do that, so I will ask Ms. Kent, our city clerk, to do a roll call on that.
Ames? Feldman? Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rattando?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes, thanks. Thank you, Ms. Kent. Now, let's go to Mayor Cahill, and he can introduce our new Sustainability Director, Irina Keith. Mayor Cahill?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. It's good to see everybody. Just looking down the list, I want to say hi also and thank our Council on Aging Director, Mary Ann Holak, and our Public Health Nurse, Teresa Kirsch, for being here tonight. I know they've got things that you folks are focusing on. And also, all the good people in our school department who are here. I want to thank you, you members of the council, for the work you're doing to acknowledge and thank them for all their work since the pandemic started. And I know you're also going to hear in a couple minutes from our Open Space and Rec Committee volunteers who are doing great work. So, thank you all for all of that. And I want to introduce our new Sustainability Director, Ms. Irina Keith. First, I want to thank our anonymous donor, who has put significant money on the table to pay for 80% of the cost of the position and some of the work that the person will be doing over the course of this year, and has made a further commitment to meet 60% of the cost of the position in year two and 40% in year three to help us with our, you know, with our startup efforts to take that position on fully, you know, by year four. But it's a wonderful thing because it's allowed us to get going with an incredibly important position. So, I want to... Oh, and I forgot to mention Ms. Barrett. I know that Ms. Barrett and I are both here to talk with you a bit later in the agenda about her request around fast EV charging stations in our municipal lots. But, you know, back to the Sustainability Director position and to Ms. Keith, you know, there's a lot that goes into the position, things like working on clean energy, waste reduction, open space, greenhouse gas mitigation. You folks know it well. We've been discussing it, working on these issues together. And to have the ability to hire somebody has been a great thing. And I will tell you, Ms. Keith is... She's fantastic. I think hiring well is incredibly important, and I think we've been fortunate in finding somebody who is proving her value every day. She's only been in the job a short few weeks, but she's doing incredible work already. I want to thank you folks for giving her a forum to say hi and introduce to you, you know, to the community, Ms. Irina Keith. Thank you.
Ms. Keith?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for having me here. I must say, I've been so impressed by how much the city has gotten done already and under the umbrella of sustainability and how much the city kind of has teed up into the future. So, I feel very fortunate to be able to jump right into some of the projects that Mayor Cahill had mentioned, from renewable energy all the way to the climate action planning process. So, I'm very excited to be doing this work in Beverly. I've had the pleasure of meeting a handful of you already, and I look forward to working with you all in the future. I'm happy to drop my contact information in the chat, so please feel free to reach out when it makes sense for you. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Keith. Anybody want to ask a question or give Ms. Keith a personal greeting? And get off easy. Thanks, Irina. Appreciate you leaving your contact info, and it was great meeting you the other night, and I'm sure you'll get to see everybody else soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have a resolution prepared by Councilors Rattando and Councilor Feldman, and I would ask that you read that and acknowledge the people that are here. Either Kathleen or Todd to start?
Councilor Feldman, you can start if you wish.
Well, we thank you for having us, and I'd like to thank everyone that is here. I'm not sure who is on the call right now. I think I see Christina Leal from Food Services, and I just... If Todd, if you could help me out with this here?
Teresa Kirsch is here, I believe. Dana's here. I saw June here, and I don't know if I caught anyone. I didn't see Bill Burkle was invited, but I think everyone else that we invited is here, so if I did miss you, I apologize. I believe that was everyone, Councilor Feldman.
Okay, thank you. We worked on this resolution when we were preparing our research for the first responders and their response to the pandemic. It just, it seemed appropriate to also thank some of our other city services that went above and beyond, especially to keep people fed and safe, especially our children. So, without further ado, I'd like to thank everyone for being here, and I will get to reading the resolution. So, we recognize that this public health emergency has placed a disproportionate strain on our city's essential employees, who are going to work each day to ensure that the essential needs of our community for food, medical care, and clean and safe public buildings and spaces are met. Our city employees worked regardless of their personal health and safety in the early days of the global pandemic with limited PPE and limited knowledge of this virus and...
Whereas it is the mission of the Beverly Health Department to serve as a resource committed to educate, inform, and protect the general public and meet the multitude of health-related needs of the community. The Beverly Board of Health is a four-person staff that works to provide services for the community, such as the flu clinic, community health, environmental health tobacco control program, as well as food safety, household hazardous waste, animal control, and sanitary health of buildings.
Whereas the entire health department staff worked nonstop almost seven days a week at an emergency level since March. In addition, this public health emergency, again, demonstrated the regional collaboration and support of health departments by sharing and/or creating best practices and striving for regional consistency with enforcement and policy.
Whereas the duties of the public health nurse of the department oscillate greatly expanded with COVID-19. After initially being involved with monitoring, travel is a quickly changed to confirmed COVID-19 case management and contact tracing. The spread of this highly contagious virus and its devastation on the long-term congregate living facilities and quickly overwhelmed the department's single public health nurse.
Whereas on March 13th, 2020, Beverly Public Schools had closed abruptly due to the COVID-19 pandemic. To assist the Board of Health, the 12 school nurses were trained and deployed under the public health nurse supervision to assist with case management and contact tracing. The nurse leader and her staff quickly became immersed in their new full-time positions. The additional nursing assistants helped ease some of the burden that the public health nurse felt in managing the overwhelming task of getting our community through the spring surge.
Whereas in addition to their work with the Beverly Board of Health, school nurses looked to their own assigned buildings to see where they could also be of assistance. Many of them reached out to families in need of guidance with chronic medical conditions, food insecurity, helping out districts. Food Services and Beverly Bootstrap distributed... disputed, I'm sorry, distributed food for needy families. Others created online health lessons for students now relying on remote learning. Some volunteered their time to make home deliveries for those who were in quarantine. Through their work as case investigators, school nurses were able to provide that needed connection and support to those experienced firsthand the trauma of COVID-19 in their families.
Whereas the Beverly School Nurses and the Beverly Board of Health continued their collaborations throughout the summer months as the caseloads began to decline, leading to a return to schools for many students, beginning with summer school. The work of planning and coordinating health services on this community level is more important now than ever. School nurses are positioned on the front lines in battling this unprecedented pandemic as they continue their daily mission to keep students, staff, and families safe as they return to school.
Whereas the Beverly Public Food Service Program consists of 31 staff members, of which 11 of those workers became frontline workers on March 16th, 2020 during the early pandemic, providing 65,000 lunch and breakfast to Beverly Public School children to help combat food insecurity. During the spring and summer, staff with help of the Beverly Public School bus drivers went to Holcroft Park and Apple Village to provide meals.
Whereas the Beverly Public School Food Service Workers have provided 1,000 fresh produce boxes to families free of charge. Since September 16th, 2020, they continue to provide 90% of all Beverly Public School students with school breakfast and lunch at no charge. The Food Service Workers continue to provide combo boxes weekly for families in our community.
Whereas the Beverly School Transportation Staff and Drivers transport school lunches and boxed produce multiple times every week to different neighborhoods, ensuring that all our children receive nutritious meals regardless of access limitations.
Now, therefore, be it known that the Beverly City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Beverly, wishes to express the utmost gratitude for and pride in the hard work and dedication of our city's frontline workers during such challenging times. The Beverly City Council and the citizens of Beverly understand that, at a time when non-frontline workers were asked and advised to stay home, frontline workers were asked to do just the opposite, in many cases, increasing the potential of risk to themselves and their families. We hereby commend them for their sacrifice and their service.
Great job. You make a great team. Any of our invited guests wish to make a comment or say something about their experiences the past seven months, seven, eight months? Not necessary. Just know that we'd all appreciate you. Any councils wish to make a comment? I always look at Councilor Houseman on my screen. All right. Then I would entertain a motion to wholeheartedly thank Councilors Rattando and Feldman and to approve this resolution. Great work.
So moved.
Miss President.
Second.
And a roll call, Ms. Kent.
Ames? Feldman? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rattando?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes, and Mr. Burke would have liked to be here today. I spoke with him, and he had a previous engagement, and he sends his thanks and gratitude. Okay. Now, we have Mary Ann Holak, the Director of our Council on Aging and Senior Care. Great to see you, Mary Ann.
Thank you very much, President Guanci, and hello, everyone. It's nice to see you, even if it is on a computer screen. I just wanted to just give you a quick update. The Senior Center building may have been closed through the early parts of the pandemic, but my staff and I were working every single day. And over the last several months, we've actually touched base with 7,000 different older adults in Beverly through many different means. We did 109 home visits. We've done outreach phone calls. We've connected people with bootstraps and with senior care for their meal program. We had 30 CSA farm shares that we distributed for the last 10 weeks, and we're working with bootstraps on some food programs for the winter as well. In the middle of September, we actually opened up for some outdoor and a few indoor programming. They were not, you know, highly participated, but people did enjoy. We still are doing an outdoor exercise class for eight people, and tomorrow looks like a great day to hold it outside. So, we're happy that we were able to at least see a few of our favorite people and to help them. Of course, I know the pandemic has been very difficult on older adults, and there was one two-week period this summer where I actually sent 14 sympathy cards. And those were people who were, before the pandemic, were coming to the Senior Center for lunch, using our transportation, going to parties, going to Foxwoods. And, you know, some of them, you know, were at the end of their life, but I think the pandemic certainly hurried it up, even if they didn't really have COVID. They had other, you know, underlying conditions that hastened their death, and it's very sad. It's affected all of us here tremendously. So, keep us all in your thoughts, because this is a tough job during these times. We're used to seeing people happy and independent. Tonight, I have Linnea Hadberg with me, and Linnea is the program, the Community Programs Director at Senior Care. And Senior Care and ourselves have worked very closely throughout the pandemic to make sure Beverly seniors are taken care of. So, Linnea, thank you for being here tonight.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for having me. I'm here tonight to extend a couple of things from Senior Care to Mary Ann Holak and the Council on Aging in general. When we got hit with the pandemic in the middle of March, it was a pretty big, as we all know, it was a... It was a lot to handle all at once, and I think we already just turned that in that really great resolution that was just passed. One of the things from our perspective here at Senior Care was making sure that the older adult population in Beverly was fed. And in 2019, September, just to give you a sense, we delivered about 3,700 meals on wheels. This September, we delivered about 5,200, so we've seen about a 40% increase. It was immediate and very, very quick. And we are very, very grateful to the Council on Aging for never closing. We were there five days a week. We could get in, get access. Gracious enough, the dining room right now is set up so that the meal delivery drivers can come in and be six feet apart in space when they're picking up their meals to, you know, to do that safely. We shifted the congregate meal program, which used to be a really great, you know, opportunity for everyone to sit around and eat and socialize together, and that's become a grab-and-go program. And so, just as, you know, a point of reference for you, if any of you have constituents who are six-year-olds, or and they are always able to get a meal from us. Right now, we're delivering four out of five days. That's just to save on our supplies and our PPE, but everyone gets an extra meal on Tuesday to eat on Wednesday. So, they're always welcome to come by and pick up a grab-and-go meal. We do ask that people sign up for it. But that's not why I'm here. So, we also started working really closely. We've always had, enjoyed a really good partnership with our Council on Aging, and we need to. We're all, we're serving basically the same constituency, kind of from different angles, and it's really important that we work together to ensure that older adults in the City of Beverly and in the other eight cities and towns that Senior Care serves get access to all of these services. In addition to changing what we did with the meals back in March, we also started first weekly conference calls with all nine councils on aging. Over time, that's morphed into every other month or every other week, and it's a Zoom meeting, but it really has allowed a chance to share resources. We could hear resources from all the communities. We could share them. We could get them posted, and it was really a cooperative arrangement with all of the councils on aging. And for example, when Mary Ann started the Front Porch Program, she was able to bring that back to the other councils on aging and actually inspired some of the other COAs to look at doing some similar services. In recognition of that, on September 23rd, at our board meeting, our annual meeting, the Senior Care Board had voted to award each of the councils on aging directors in the nine cities and towns we serve with a special recognition award. So, I'm just here tonight to let everyone on the city council know that Mary Ann received that award, and it was in recognition of dedication to the highest quality of life for each older American in your community and your tireless commitment to ensuring each person receives the services they so richly deserve. So, on behalf of the Senior Care Board of Directors, we're happy to extend that to Mary Ann.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I'm really honored, and I congratulate all my counterparts. I think we each other only know how difficult our jobs are, and especially in the time of the pandemic. We have been really, you know, wanting to make sure everybody is whole, and it takes a lot of effort to make those outreach phone calls and to talk to people and encourage them to call us if they need something. And, you know, between myself and the social worker and my assistant director, we've been out with the community policing unit on cases. We've been out with the animal control officer on cases this summer. So, we also are called into making some home visits for things that aren't very happy, situations that aren't going well for people. So, Senior Care has been a great partner through all of this, and so I thank you and I'm really honored. And I also should say, I couldn't do this without my staff, and I have a very small staff, because, you know, four of them are bus drivers and two are in the maintenance department. But the small professional staff has really bonded and worked very closely throughout the pandemic to make sure that we're there for people who need us. As a matter of fact, I did a robo-call last Friday and said, "If you need to talk to somebody, please call us." And didn't I get a phone call over the weekend saying, "I want to take you up on your offer. I want you to hear what I've been going through during the pandemic." So, that was one of my first phone calls today. So, anyways, it's a pleasure. You know, we love our people, and we want them to be whole. And I told Mayor Cahill last week, this is the time of year where we have to really get the message out that every single neighbor needs to take on ownership of checking in on their neighbors and letting us know if they're worried about something. We can't, we can't possibly have eyes on every senior in Beverly, but we know that in the neighborhoods, people worry, they wonder, and then if they can't help themselves, we hope they'll call us to let us know that somebody is in need of something. So, anyways, thank you very much, and thank you, Linnea, for being here tonight.
And Mary Ann, you have a giving program now. You're looking for donations for seniors?
Yes, we are. Every year, we bring holiday baskets to some of our lower-income clients and our clients that most at need. And so, this year, we really felt it was a year to bring comfort items like, you know, a warm scarf, a box of tea, just apples and oranges, just really things that would bring comfort to people. So, whether somebody donates a gift card that we can use to go buy apples and oranges, or they, you know, knit us some homemade scarves or some holiday masks, we'll include all of those in gift baskets, and we'll be delivering them to the front door of all the people that we can during the holiday season. So, we are definitely looking for some donors, and I actually had, you know, a couple of the businesses in Beverly step up too, who are taking up collections for us. So, really, really happy for that.
And Mary Ann, where can people drop off donations?
We have a new doorbell at the Senior Center, so they're welcome to ring the doorbell and drop off whatever they might like to donate.
Great, thank you. I thought that was a budget line this year, new doorbell, Senior Center. Thanks so much, Mary Ann.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. And we'll pass the word around, everybody, that the stuff that you're looking for that would really help people out during this time of year. And Linnea, thank you for being here and recognizing one of the stars in our community. Mary Ann really is a special person. We're lucky to have her. And now, on our agenda, we have Mr. David Alden St. Pierre, who I think is taking over for Charlie Mann. Charlie Mann was always the one to give us the annual report from the Open Space and Recreation Committee. So, Mr. St. Pierre, thank you so much for being here.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I'm so, you know, taking over for Charlie. He just asked for me to do the presentation. And so, I actually have some slides. So, give me one second here to see if I can make this happen. Window. Can't share my screen. Says blah, blah, blah. Well, that's unfortunate, because I have some slides with some photos to make this a little more interesting and exciting than just giving you the rundown. But in any event, I guess that won't work. So, yeah, my name is Dave Alden St. Pierre. I am the Ward Five Representative for the Open Space and Recreation Committee, here tonight to give you guys an update on our 2020 Annual Report. So, I think, as you guys probably know, that the Open Space Committee was formed back in 1999 to work with the city council and the mayor to advise the city officials on issues concerning open space and recreation. And the committee doesn't have any budgetary powers. Its primary duties include preparing and updating the open space plan, which was last updated back in 2016. It's up to expire in August of '22. of '22. We also maintain an inventory of open spaces. We set criteria for open space acquisitions, recreational facility development, recommending financial alternatives. And this year, we did have 10 meetings in the fiscal year to form those items. No, just try it one more time. Okay, so one of the major projects we were able to complete this year was something that started back in 2017. We had received a grant from the Department of Conservation and Recreation Massachusetts Trail Grant Program. And that was some in-kind funding, gave the committee about $7,600. And that allowed us to accomplish one of the strategies that was laid out in the 2016 Open Space and Recreation Plan. And that was to improve some of the signage around the city of Beverly. So we have some new wayfinding signs that are scattered all about the city, which will tell you how to get to the Hana Trails, or to the J.C. Phillip Trails, or to the Norwood Pond Trails. Then there are a bunch of new trailhead signs that say, please enjoy this public trail. And in addition to that, we updated all of the trail maps, including some new numbering systems at the major intersections. And then with those new maps, we updated a lot of the trail kiosk signs. And that really had a good impact for people who aren't that familiar with the trails, they're able to look at the map and look at the numbering system and sort of get their way around the trails. It also helps from a safety standpoint because if people get stuck or lost, they can look at the numbering system and find their way out. And while those signs and numbers just got up this year, we've already had to face some vandalism with some of those signs being taken down. So that's sort of an ongoing process for us to work on that. And I did have some pictures of those, but you'll have to trust me, they look good. One of the other things that was done, also it actually started back in 2017, and that was a trail that goes around the Greens Hill. And that trail not only kind of scouts that area, but also improves some of the waterfront access. And so that trail was started back in 2017 with the help of a number of volunteers, including some Beverly High School seniors. The trail was put on hold for a short time because there was a dispute that one of the trailheads on Green Street, but that has finally come to a resolution. And so once that is done, we're going to need some Department of Public Service help finalizing that. And then we look forward to having a trail opening celebration once that has been completed. We continue to work towards identifying opportunities for open space acquisition and easements. And our committee has certainly appreciated the conversations we've had with the mayor on these topics. And we also continue to refine and advocate for our priorities list in terms of properties that we really hope to protect for the city and its citizens. We continue to work with other committees, including the Planning Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Conservation Commission, looking for consistency with the Open Space and Recreation Plan, looking for ways to preserve or improve access to open space and trail networks. So for example, we weighed in on some of the projects up off of Dunham Road. We provided some recommendations for the master plan. We talked about some programs going on at the Waring School and at Moynihan Lumber. So we're just always trying to advocate keeping some of those trails and open spaces open and accessible. We work to support the OSRD provisions of these sitting zonings ordinance, and that has contributed to the permanent protection of about 35 acres of open space. Some of that is owned by the city, some of it's owned by nonprofit organizations, and some of it is on private homeowner associations. One of our committee members, Todd Calligan, has been very proactive in combining his participation with the Open Space Committee with the Harbor Management Authority. And that's helped kind of keep an eye on about 12 miles of our waterfront to keep that accessible for our citizens. We have also worked on our open space maintenance and stewardship. And some of the programs that we typically hold each year, of course, were postponed because of COVID. So for example, our Earth Day walks, we couldn't do those this year. And while some of the programs we've put on have been postponed, we have seen a marked increase in trail usage, which on one hand has been good, but also that has led to some more littering and some other trail misuse. So we've had to respond to some concerted citizens about what's been going on in the trails and try to keep them open and clean. We've worked with some of the other organizations in the area, such as Essex County Green Belt. For example, they also typically have some events like the trail run at Beverly Commons. But again, that was not, that didn't happen this year. And then we work with volunteers who are looking for community projects, for example, like local scouts or sporting teams that are looking for some type of community benefit. And so they've facilitated a number of projects on our trails, including building bridges or just doing trail cleanup days. So we've helped them complete those tasks. We have been focusing on community outreach. Primarily, that's been through social media. So there's an Open Space and Recreation Committee page on Facebook. And we sometimes post a lot of nice photos from the trails on there to kind of keep the trails in people's mind. And we'll try to cross-pollinate some of those photos from the OSRC Facebook page to the Beverly Facebook page. The Salem News did a little feature about some of our trails. So we're just trying to keep them out and about so people are aware about some of the amazing opportunities that there are for outdoor recreation right here in our city. Many of our members continue to try to be main educated on topics that focus on open space. And again, while COVID has impacted this this year, and we haven't been able to attend a lot of the conferences we normally do, some of them have either been postponed or are going to be online. And for example, Essex County Green Belt has an open space trails conference, which is going to be completely virtual in December. And some of our members will be coming on some of those conferences just to keep up to date with what's going on in terms of trail access and advocacy. And the last thing I just wanted to mention in terms of how our membership is set up, you know, we have a representative from each ward and mayoral appointments, including two at-large members, a representative from the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, Harbor Management Authority, and Parks and Recreation Commissions. We had some vacancies, but we just filled our Ward Three vacancy. So that's all set. And we're mostly up and running. We do have a couple of other vacancies, so we're working to fill those. And that's kind of it. I had hoped to show some pictures because I think we do have some beautiful trails, and I think the photos kind of highlight that. But you just got to listen to me speak instead. So that's all I have for you tonight as our 2020 update.
Well, David, so I mean, don't say just we got to listen to you. I think that you did a great job. We always like new people on our Zoom calls. And thanks to Charlie Mann for giving you the responsibility and the opportunity to present today. Do any councilors have any questions for Mr. Alden St. Pierre? I think the Patriots are on. That's why nobody is asking questions tonight.
There you go.
I worked with Darlene Nguyen, the Planning Director, over this past weekend. And I had three students who needed hours for their confirmation community service. And they spent the afternoon in Sally Milligan. And they were pretty amazed at how clean it was when they finished. So there's so many other opportunities. The signage looks great. I mean, in our neighborhood where I live, up on Stanley Street, the signs to get you to the trails back where the greenhouse used to be, you'd never know that there were trails back there. So you're doing great work. Great work.
There's so many great opportunities, and I appreciate the chance to do what we do.
Yeah. And this summer, it was a great time. People were looking for things to do with passive recreation, trying to stay busy and stay away from people. And it's nice to be out there in the woods.
It really is. It really is. Well, thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you all.
Great. Thanks again. Keep up the good work. Okay, we are back to our agenda. That was great. I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our meeting that was held on September 30th, 2020.
So moved.
And a roll call?
Name? Thomas? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rattando?
Yes.
Guanxi?
Yes. We are at, if I'm correct, Ms. Kent, we are Communications from his on to the mayor.
Order number 226. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $45,000 grant from the Baker-Polito Administration through the Planning Assistant Grant Program. This grant funding will be used to explore diversifying housing choices in Beverly, specifically conducting a study about accessory dwelling units. The program is part of the technical assistance offered to communities in support of the Baker-Polito Administration's Housing Choice Initiative. Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant at your upcoming meeting on Monday, November 9. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Ms. Kent, that was order 226, right?
Correct.
So we'll go back to 225?
Oh, yeah.
No worries. And our grant queen, Catherine Barrett, is here. Ms. Barrett, any comments on this one?
Thank you, President Guanxi. And thank you to the council. This grant is to conduct a study to explore the option of accessory dwelling units in Beverly. And our Planning Director Darlene Nguyen worked on this grant, so we were very happy to receive it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from members of the city council? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the grant.
So moved, Mr. President. But we have a councilor who would like to ask a question or comment.
Oh, I didn't see that. Okay, Councilor Rand.
Thank you. I tried to type fast, but, excuse me, I do have one question. So I'm so glad to hear that this grant is in support of researching accessory dwelling units. I'm just wondering, is that for like a consultant? Or tell me what the funding will actually go towards?
Yes. So the funding is coming from the state, and it pays for a consulting firm to conduct a study of the option of accessory dwelling units in Beverly. And I believe it highlights other cities and towns that already have an accessory dwelling unit ordinance and provides us with information that we can then take and make a recommendation.
That's great. I have one follow-up question, if that's okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I do see the mayor's interested in speaking. I don't know. I can ask after.
No, I've got a thought or two, but why don't you ask your question first?
Thank you. I was just, let's see if I can remember my question now. Yep, sorry. It's gone. Guess it wasn't that important.
Mayor Cahill?
Sure. Maybe I'll answer without you asking her, or maybe I'll drag you until Rand to remember.
I'm sure.
I want to say that if you remember, we did the Housing Needs Analysis and Housing Production Plan a few years ago. And there were roughly 18, 19 recommendations that came from it. One of them was to consider an accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Now, we at present have an in-law apartment ordinance, right? That's the only reason that somebody could add a dwelling unit, an apartment, to a single-family home in Beverly. And that would be for a family member, right? This would be a little more, you know, a little broader in scope if we were to go this way. But, you know, to make any changes, we would need to go through an ordinance change process with you folks. So the study that's coming, you know, Salem has been involved in a conversation about accessory dwelling unit that went up and an ordinance change for some time now, several months. And so we'll be looking to see who's done this anywhere else. If we were to try to do something in Beverly, what it might look like? Would it be a kind of across the board, all loans? Would it be potentially targeted within walking distance of train stations in certain neighborhoods? You know, there are a number of ways of looking at it. It may or may not work in our community. This is a chance to dig into the details. And so, you know, I will ask Mrs. Nguyen to make sure that we, you know, we share a couple of thoughts with you folks as we get started so you can be plugged into the process. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Councilor Rand, you're good?
Actually, I remembered. And you did partially answer that question, Mayor Cahill. I was going to ask if this phase of the grant would include public process, or if that will come sort of more after the recommendation.
Ms. Barrett, can you answer that? I'm not sure in the detail there. I don't know if you are.
I'm not sure. I'd have to check in with our Planning Director Darlene Nguyen. I'm sure there's a public comment portion. I'm not sure if it's during the study or if it's after. I can confirm that with Darlene Nguyen, though.
Why don't we get something to the clerk as a follow-up to share publicly? Does that make sense?
Yep, will do.
Thanks.
That's great. And it will not, and that will still allow us to approve the grant, which Councilor Houseman made the motion. And how about a second?
Second. Name? Thomas? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rattando?
Yes.
Guanxi?
Yes. This is my big break in show business right now. Ms. Kent doesn't have order 225, so I will read it. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $33,000 grant from the Recycling Dividends Program, RDP, which is managed by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protections Bureau of Air and Waste. This grant will allow the city to continue to implement eco-friendly policies that maximize recycling, composting, and waste reduction programs. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayoral approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request that the city council approve this grant at your upcoming meeting on Monday, November 9, 2020. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Mayor Michael P. Cahill. Councilor Houseman?
Yeah, perhaps I put my name in the chat box a little early. I just want to hear some details about what kind of resources are going to be supported by this grant specifically.
And that question would be to Ms. Barrett?
Thank you, President Guanxi. So this grant is actually an annual grant that the city receives each year. Karen Cotter in our engineering department works on this grant and does a fantastic job. We actually received the highest amount ever this year, and it was submitted sort of in the peak of the pandemic. So I just want to say thank you to her. It was challenging circumstances. This grant basically covers a whole plethora of initiatives in the city, from recycling to composting to waste stream reduction, and actually saves the city valuable tax dollars because it reduces the amount of waste we're sending and reduces the tipping fees that we pay. So I could certainly get more specifics as far as if you want to know precisely what the money will be used for.
Yeah, I guess I would ask maybe either to you or to the mayor. I have a lot of plastic building up in my garage that I've been saving during the time when we couldn't recycle it. And I'm wondering if we have any good mechanism for, you know, making, putting that back into the recycling system. I don't want to get too far off the grant, but I have been wondering about that for a while. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, do you have a hand up?
Yeah, sure, Mr. President. Thanks. And thanks, Councilor, and thanks, Ms. Barrett. So on your specific question, Councilor, you know, when last I was in a meeting about recycling streams, which was sometime in the last month, there's some indication that markets are rebounding domestically. We can ask specifically of JRM how those markets are looking at present and what they're seeing, you know, when we send our recyclables to them, who's buying it? So why don't we get a little report back on that? That can only help the community to understand. So happy to bring that to you folks at a future meeting. As far as the money we get, you know, the Waste Reduction Committee has a lot of ideas on how to effectively spend that money. We've worked with them in recent years on some of those ways. One that comes to mind quickly is when we started our Bring Your Own Bag policy after the ordinance that you folks passed. policy after the ordinance that you folks passed, um, we actually, with their, with their support, spent some of that money to buy the reusable bags that we handed out. Do you remember, we, we did, uh, several public, um, giveaways in different stores? We also put them in the hands of, um, of people at the senior housing and public housing, ways that we could get them out to people, get them directly in their hands so they could start using them. That's an example of, of how some of that money is, is appropriate to spend.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Feldman?
Yes, thank you. Um, my question was similar to Counselor Hausman's along the same lines of, um, it sounds like this is kind of, since this is annual funds, that it's supporting programs that are already in place, and I was wondering if there was any, um, thought to using the money to expand some of the recycling? I know we're still in a holding pattern with some of that, but I have had, uh, constituent concerns about recycling in the apartment buildings and condos, and I was wondering if any of this was moving in that direction of maybe expanding our recycling.
I'll, I'll, I'll take that one. As, as some of you know, and Counselor Feldman, you, you just haven't been through the, um, the process on this one, uh, you know, so most of the apartment and condo buildings in the city are responsible for their own trash recycling, composting if they do it. Um, there was a point in time, some 30, 40 years ago, where most municipalities started going that route with, with, um, multi-unit, uh, residential buildings and, and not allowing them into, uh, the municipal, uh, waste programs. So, I mean, these, this was kind of, this is common really, I think, I think across the country, certainly regionally. So we don't pick up those buildings and their, and their residents within the municipal program. Um, whether or not there's a way to use some of that money to incentivize those type of steps in some of those buildings, I, I think that's a fair conversation for the, for the committee to take up. Maybe they've already had that conversation, but I, I, I think, uh, maybe I should direct you to them, to the Waste Reduction Committee, and, and see if, um, you know, if, if A, they've already had a discussion along those lines, and B, if they'd entertain one. Just thinking aloud with you.
That would be great, yeah. I know that that's been a, and it might not be on the topic of this grant, that question, but it's, it's come up before, and I had been
Sure.
wondering about it, so looked like a possible opportunity.
And I, and I think, I'll stop, good.
All good?
Yeah, I think, I think Counselor Rand might be about to say something that'll be enlightening here, too, if I'm, if we're thinking along the same lines.
Estelle?
Um, I, I was just going to add that I believe this is the grant that, um, we actually can, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the way we get this funding is by kind of checking off points, um, like by having a composting program, having a recycling program. So every time the city adds something, like having a private hauler's, um, required recycling program, we actually ha- can receive more funding. It's, it's sort of the state's way of incentivizing our community to keep checking those things off the list. And, um, I love that, um, Arena is on this call with us, and just, it makes me feel so excited that we have this grant, we have the Waste Reduction Committee, we have a mayor who cares about this, and lots of city councilors asking these questions. I feel so hopeful that we can do, um, some of the things that we've, you know, talked about in the past few years. Um, I just feel like we'll have so much more momentum with all these people working on it, so just a comment.
If I could follow up on that, thanks, Counselor Rand, and, and you're right, to have Ms. Keith in the call, she's hearing some things that maybe she hasn't heard yet from, from me. Uh, and, and I think it goes to some of the measures that we, together, you as counsel, me as mayor, we're, we're looking to step into this year that COVID has kind of sent us sideways a bit on. Um, you know, and, and I'd say probably first, the, the, the challenges with the recycling markets probably had us treading a bit lightly on the, uh, a step that we've talked about, which is to require all haulers to recycle, uh, because, you know, the, the same haulers that handle municipal waste, you know, JRM in our community, Waste Management and others in other communities, hold these private contracts with these, these apartment and condo developments, and, you know, to start to require the hauler to actually recycle with all of their contracts is something that we talked about, and we probably want to revisit. Um, and then also, you know, we did the, the Bring Your Own Bag ordinance, we also started talking about, uh, uh, polystyrene and plastics in Beverly. And again, COVID has had us, I think, hitting pause on, you know, recognizing that some of the very businesses who we would be looking to ask to take on some of those changes are right now fighting for survival. So, you know, I, I think when it comes to some of the, some of the products that hit the waste stream and are problematic environmentally, we're not making the progress we want to right at the moment. I think we'll, you know, we'll be looking to, to revisit those things as soon as we feel we can. And I think that's, you know, that's a, a bit of a balance at the moment that we're all kind of trying to walk.
All good? Thank you, everyone, for your questions and your comments. I'd entertain a motion to approve, uh, accept the grant.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Kayne Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes.
Ms. Kent.
Thank you for reading that. I just found it, it was clipped to another order. I appreciate you doing it. Order number 227, dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint public review and recommendation, Ms. Nancy Cece, at 15 Kennedy Drive, Beverly, to serve as constable in the City of Beverly for the express purpose of serving civil process, attaches Ms. Cece's application, which has been approved by Police Chief John L. Latcher. Her term will be effective from November 15, 2020 until November 15, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Uh, please refer to the Committee on Legal Affairs. And Ms. Kent, on order number 228, my business is listed here, so I should probably step down and ask Counselor Rand to take the chair on this one, and I'll disappear for a moment.
Okay.
Sound good?
Sounds good.
All right.
Order number 228, dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly has received a $500 donation of $25, $20 gift cards from a private citizen to Mike's Pizza and Super Sub to benefit our veterans in the community. These gift cards will be distributed through our Veterans Department to those in need. In addition, Iron Tree donated crane service to lift a 20-foot Conex box over a building in North Beverly Cemetery for the Veterans Grave Restoration Office. The value of this complimentary service is estimated at $1,500 to $2,000. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grants earmarked donations or gifts to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve these donations by taking action on this matter at your upcoming meeting on November 9th, 2020. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Cahill, did you have any comment to share with us about the, how we ended up with such a generous gift?
No, other than, other than being grateful for it, I, I think it's, it's an example of people looking to, um, you know, to identify needs that are particularly, um, what's the word, particularly, um, in focus right now during the pandemic, people who, you know, maybe in, in, in other times might be of less need, but certainly our veterans community is, is always a, uh, worthy and honorable way to, to, to try to make a difference. So I'm, I'm grateful, and I, uh, look forward to your, hopefully, uh, acceptance of this gift. Thanks.
Great, and actually, it's nice that this is coming right before Veterans Day. Um, so I would accept the motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Kayne?
And a roll call?
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
And Rotundo?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Here we come, stack. Order number 229, dear Honorable City Council, I write today to respectfully request your approval for the city's first DC fast charging station installation project. In the United States, the sales of electric vehicles are increasingly dramatically, which has resulted in a great need for electric vehicle charging infract- infr- infrastructure. By installing reliable charging infrastructure, the goal is to attract visitors to Beverly while supporting sustainable development, reduction of harmful carbon emissions, and encouraging the migration to electric vehicles. During, the City of Beverly only offers publicly accessible charging stations at the Beverly Middle School, and these are Level 2 chargers. The city seeks to issue a request for proposal for the installation of four high-speed Level 3 charging stations at the Lower 11 Pond Street Municipal Parking Lot. The parking lot is centrally located in downtown Beverly, very close to the restaurant standards and retail businesses. Since electric vehicle owners often look to charge where their, they are parked, drivers appreciate public parking that will allow them to run their errands while boosting their vehicle's battery. In addition, the Lower 11 Pond Street Parking Lot is currently underutilized, making it an ideal place for electric vehicle charging stations. Also, DC fast charging is the fastest electric vehicle charging available today. The city proposes through a request for proposal process to offer a 10-year lease of four parking spots at the Lower 11 Pond Street Lot to a bidder who will install four high-speed Level 3 480-volt charging stations. These charging stations provide an 80% charge in 30 minutes, so are significantly faster than the Level 2 chargers, which take about four to six hours to fully charge a depleted battery. As the cost for Level 3 charging stations is high and significantly barrier using taxpayer funds, we propose lease, lease the spots and have an experience company install and manage these charging stations. At the end of the lease, the city will have the options to own the charging station or replace them with newer technology if available. Please let me know if you require additional information or if there are any questions I can answer. I respectfully ask for your support of this important DC fast charging station project. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor. Oh, unmute.
Mayor Cahill or Ms. Barrett?
I, I'm happy to answer questions, but you just listened to a whole lot of my words that Ms. Kent read. I don't want to, I don't want to belabor it, but happy to answer anything. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Rotundo has a question.
Uh, Mayor, question on the four spaces that are, uh, potentially to be leased. Will those spaces be specifically designated just for electric vehicles going forward if this is to be approved?
Yeah, so, you know, we, um, when, when it says in the letter that they're currently underutilized, they were, they were currently underutilized prior to the pandemic. Um, you know, that, that lower lot there kind of, you know, where the, where the, um, oh my gosh, the spear post is, the back of the spear, it's, it's not even that, it's down below it. Um, so yes, you will need to, um, be driving an EV to, to be able to legally park in that space, um, those, any of those four spaces, once they're leased out.
And then one follow-up question, uh, Counsel, President. The, um, we're leasing those out, so we'll be accepting payments with a bidding, so the company will be charging the fees back to whoever uses the electric station. Is that how that will work?
So, trying to think how this, they, they will be taking their electricity directly from National Grid, so they won't, you know, so, so they'll charge the, the user, right? And they pay what grid charges them, and they, they typically, you know, they, they set the rate as they set it. Um, we intend to continue to, to treat those four spaces as we do the other spaces in the downtown lots, that when you park in them, you've got to pay to park in them. That's separate from what they're going to pay to whoever, uh, owns and operates the, the stations. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so there's no real cost to us per se that, we don't have to worry, say, someone just parks their car, charges and leaves. Someone is going to be held, holding those charging cars accountable.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rotundo. Counselor Hausman?
Uh, yeah, actually, it's a, a, a similar kind of question to what Counselor Rotundo was asking, I was just looking for a little bit more detail. So, uh, one, uh, what would be the, the term of the lease, number one, and number two, I gather the financial structure is the city leases it, it's not looking to make any revenue from that lease? In other words, we find a vendor, they provide the electricity, they charge the part, the person who's parking there, uh, and, 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 and that vendor presumably makes some kind of profit for it, and the city ba- the city's role basically is to make the, the space strategically available, um, for, for the vendor and the person who's parking? Is that essentially how the, how the system works?
So there is a, I, I, I think you're largely on point. If, uh, if either Ms. Keith or Ms. Barrett want to join in after me for a brief, um, there, there is an appraisal process, right, for the value of the, of the space that would be leased from the city. And so that, that, those appraisals, um, I'm sorry, the, they'll be, again, appraisal will assess confused sometimes in our own context, but, um, there, there will be an appraisal done, and that will, um, be part of the RFP when it goes out, assuming you folks approve us to do so. So there will be, uh, there'll be a lease that gets struck, that needs to be negotiated and, and, and struck between the city and whoever we award the bid to, but there will be a payment that comes with that, is, is my understanding. Um, and, and to your, to your kind of broader point, yes, we have an interest in, in hosting, um, some fast charging stations because, you know, more and more people are going to be looking for those. People who come to Beverly to go shopping, people come to Beverly to go out to dinner and a show, again, soon, we hope, right? Um, and so one of the challenges of a municipality is to build on our own and, and/or, mostly and, because we are doing some of our own, uh, Level 2 charging stations, right? It's, it's to try to build out that infrastructure at a pace that can meet demand, doesn't kind of pushes, pushes the envelope a bit, but doesn't outstrip demand, uh, to where we've got spaces set aside for EVs only that EVs aren't coming here to use. So we're, you know, we're trying to target that right, uh, that right number initially.
If I may follow up, the, the, so the, the lease revenue, I, is it intended to be incentivizingly low as a lease, uh, you know, as, as the rent that's charged for it? Uh, or is it intended to, uh, be, if you will, fair market value, whatever that might be? I don't know what that would be. Uh, or is it sort of discounted to provide incentive, to put this infrastructure in place?
Well, I, I, whoops. Excuse me. My hamstring just wanted to, sorry, I might have to stand up. Um, I, I, I think to, to, to best answer your question, I'd say, you know, there's a value that, that the assessing department will, will assign to these spaces and the attendant infrastructure, um, you know, beyond the parking spaces themselves, and that'll be included in the RFP, and then it'll be a question of what comes in for bids. Though that, you know, no, we, we're not, we're not going to be looking, in fact, you know, legally, we can't just, you know, offer a discount. It's, it's what we, what our assessors value the property at, and that, that will help, you know, that should help inform anybody who's going to respond.
Counselor Flowers?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor or Ms. Barrett, um, I had a question, sort of jumping off from your comment, Mr. Mayor, about, in your answer to, um, Counselor Rotundo and Hausman, about trying to find the right balance between having, having the spots available for EVs but not having the spots sit vacant. Um, and so my question was just where, I don't disagree with the notion that that Pond Street Lot would be a good location for them, but I'm just wondering, um, what are the ways that we would make that known, especially to people who might come into Beverly from outside? Are there ways that we would add signage or, um, on our parking app? Are there ways to identify that there are EV stations if people are using the app to pay for their parking, um, so that we can sort of direct folks to those and not have them sit vacant to, I think, Counselor Rotundo's point about if other cars come and the spots are vacant and they can't use them, is there a way we can direct the right cars to the right spot?
Ms. Barrett, you know the answer. Ms. Barrett, you know the answer.
She does.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I think I'll just start with a little bit of background on level-three chargers. The only other level-three chargers that we're aware of, there's one in Peabody. North of Peabody, all the way up to Salisbury, there's no level-three chargers. So, electric vehicle drivers seek out these chargers because they charge very fast. In about a half an hour, you get an 80% charge. And what how electric vehicle drivers find these chargers, both level-two and level-three, is that they use several different apps. And they look on the apps, and they look for the type of charger that they're in need of, a fast charger, which is a level-three, which costs a little bit more. It's almost like buying premium gasoline versus, you know, regular unleaded gasoline. And this, the parking spots will be striped that they're for electric vehicles and also have signage there for electric vehicles. And when you pull into them, you see the charging station in the front. So, generally, people know that these spots are reserved for electric vehicles. And also, like the mayor said, that that lot is very underutilized. If you drive by there pretty much any day, you might see one or two cars in that lot, but it's largely empty. And so, we did a lot analysis of the municipal lots. We walked, did several sightwalks of the Barrister's Lot, the Chapman Lot, Washington Lot, 10 and 11 Pond. And this this seemed to be the perfect centralized location that will draw these electric vehicle drivers to our downtown, and hopefully, they'll be supporting our restaurants and our shops and our theaters. And so, we think it's a win-win to 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 have it at this lot.
So, I I just add to that, really to emphasize, EV owners, they have the apps, they know where they're going. They can't do what somebody driving a gas-powered car does. You can't just drive down the street, look for the nearest, you know, gas station. So, they they know before they leave home. But the, you know, the the app is is makes it very convenient for them to look ahead. You know, if somebody's going to drive into downtown Beverly because they need to charge, okay, but they'll they'll go spend a little money while they're here. It's more likely they're make they're planning a trip to Beverly, and they say, where can I where can I park my car and make sure it charges well I'm in downtown Beverly? So, you know, the four spaces out of our total downtown census of, you know, total count of spaces on street and in lot is, we think, an investment that makes a lot of sense right now.
Thank you. Yeah, I would, I just want to be clear, I was less concerned about using the four spaces and just more curious about how we direct those drivers to the right spot. So, your answers, Ms. Barrett and Mr. Mayor, that was very helpful. I imagined there must be some kind of an app. I was sort of picturing like how you find a little free library if you want one, which is, you know, through online, so it sounds similar, although for cars. So, thank you for helping me understand that.
Thank you, Counsel Flowers. Anybody else? I would entertain a motion to approve Mayor Cahill's request. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Counsel Hausman said yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Quansey?
Yes. Ms. Kent?
My son's going to be happy about that. He's picking up his Tesla tomorrow.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Good job, then.
Dodge will be great. Order number 230. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint subject to review and recommendation Mr. Kyle Sweeney at 540 Essex Street, Beverly, and Mr. Brian Whitehead, Two Spuce Run, Beverly, to serve on the Cable TV Advisory Committee. This term is effective until January 31st, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P.K. Hellmayr. I can't read tonight, sorry.
Okay, they're still tied from the election. Please refer back to the Committee on Public Services. I would be in a motion to take a to accept the late file on order number 235.
So moved. Second.
Feldman? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Quansey?
Yes. Ms. Kent?
Order number 235. I am, dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has received a $5,000 donation from Beverly resident Peter Coleman in honor of Mary Ann Holak, Director of the Council on Aging. This gift is intended to benefit the senior center and has no restrictions. Master and Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both City Council and Mayor approval before any grants, earmarks, donations, or gifts to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the City Council approve this donation by taking action on this matter at your upcoming meeting on November 9th, 2020. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P.K. Hellmayr.
Thank you. Mary Ann, I always like to see you smile. That's great. Do you want to make a comment before we consider accepting this gift?
I just, I'm I'm into like 40-plus years of my career, and I've never had something like that in in my honor, and it really was very touching, a wonderful gentleman that I've only met once. And that was when he sent another donation. And I said, you have to come over so I can meet you. And so, we became friends then, and he loves my newsletter, the monthly column that I write in the newsletter. So, when I called him to thank him, I told his wife he was a keeper, and she agreed with me. So, it's a really nice honor. I appreciate him.
Great. Any other questions or comments? I would entertain a motion to accept the gift.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's? Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Quansey?
Yes.
And Quansey?
Yes. Counsel Flaherty, do you want to find out what happened to Counsel Brady's?
Sure.
If he's coming back.
Yep.
Okay. Um, I would entertain a motion to accept another late file on order number 236. So moved.
So moved. So moved. Second.
You're in a roll call.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's? Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Quansey?
Yes.
Ms. Kent?
Order number 236. Dear Honorable City Council, enclosed, please find a proposed order amending Beverly Ordinance, Chapter 69-4 Vacation. Due to the unforeseen circumstances of the COVID-19 pandemic, there has been challenges to city employees being able to use their accrued vacation days. Under the current language of Chapter 69-4, city employees are only able to roll over 10 vacation days from one calendar year to the next, with the rollover date being December 31st. This proposed amendment would extend the rollover date to April 30th, 2021, and increase the number of carryover days from 10 to 12. This amendment relates only to calendar year 2020 vacation time. Please initiate action on this matter at your next City Council meeting, Monday, November 9th, 2020. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P.K. Hellmayr.
And Ms. Kent, do you want to read the proposed order?
The order ending Beverly Ordinance, Chapter 69-4 Vacations by adding Paragraph G. In order to address vacation leave, issues arising from the COVID-19 pandemic notwithstanding Paragraph F. Number one, the December 31st, 2020 deadline for carryover shall be extended to April 30th, 2021. And number two, employees should be allowed to carry over up to 12 vacation days through the remaining months of calendar 2021. This provision is applicable only to vacation carryover from cal- calendar year 2020.
Thank you. Mayor Cahill, do you want to make a comment on before we take action on this?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. And Assistant Solicitor, Mr. Dole, Jesse Dole's here, if you have any questions on the order. I would just say that, you know, as as with all of us, it's hard, it's been hard, it continues to be hard for people to take vacation in in the way people traditionally want to. At the same time, it's really important that people take time, you know, away from work if if, you know, if if we're fortunate enough to be working, it's still important to take time away because of the pressures that are coming with the pandemic. Governor Baker recently extended out for state employees the ability to use up their 2020 time beyond December 31st, extended it into late April. We're we're proposing to do the same thing here for for municipal employees. It's just to give more flexibility, you know, rather than people not being able to use time that that they have a right to, or, you know, trying to use it all up in a bunch after having had a hard time using it to now this year. This gives people that little little bit of more of a release valve to use it up through the end of April.
Thank you. Any questions for either Mayor Cahill or our Assistant City Solicitor, Mr. Jesse Dole? Counsel Hausman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, no, I just think I want to commend the administration for taking this action. I mean, I think it's very appropriate, well-deserved. It goes in line with the various resolutions that the council has passed honoring the the difficulty that city, you know, the municipal and and school workers have have faced in light of this pandemic. So, I I wholeheartedly support this and be more than happy to make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Counsel Hausman's made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
And how about a roll call, Ms. Kent?
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Quansey?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Cahill, and thank you, Mr. Dole. Communications from other city offices and boards.
Order number 231 from the Chief Assessor, Peter Karen. Request to set up a public hearing relative to the allegation of fiscal year 2021 tax levy percentages.
And I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing for Monday night, November 23rd, 2020, at 7:30 PM.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call, please.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's? Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Quansey?
Yes. Communications, applications, and petitions.
Order number 232, a petition from National Grid, number 29408289, to install a central line at the intersection of Bailey Ave and Foster's Point.
I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing for Monday, November 23rd, 2020, at 7:15 PM.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Quansey?
Yes.
Yes, and I was smiling because I noticed that we had a special guest star appear at our City Council meeting this evening, Nancy Freyde's. Good to see you, Nancy. That is all out of our agenda, correct?
Yes.
Counsel Brady's has asked for a few moments to make a statement. Counsel Brady's.
Thanks so much, Mr. President. Sorry for all the computer trouble, but maybe that's a ominous sign that it's time to move. Anyway, I just wanted to say a quick thing about, before I get to my remarks, about honoring Jack Good as well. You know, what an incredible man, legend, his legacy is is just remarkable, what he's done for all of our community, especially on the philanthropic side. It's going to be huge shoes to fill. Okay, I just wanted to say a few things. 32 years ago, a young city of Beverly, Alderman at large, moved with his family into their new forever home in the Centerville section, Ward 6. Fast forward to now, this senior citizen, as the Council President loves to call me, is moving on with his incredible wife, Nancy, to a new home in Goat Hill, Ward 2. Hey, that's a nice story, happens all the time, time marches on for all of us. But what this means, however, in my case, is according to city charter, and I'm looking at you, Counselor Flaherty, who wrote this specifically for me, I'm sure, I must resign my position as Ward 6 City Council by year's end, 12/31/2020. We didn't come to this decision lightly, but it was overwhelming with the climate right now and the real estate market being so hot not to make the move. You know, we've gone through so many changes recently, and I think this was another one of life's moments that needs to be addressed. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve as the current Ward 6 City Councilor. After my son Pete's diagnosis in 2012, we had the most incredible, amazing support and outreach from this city and from the community. And in return, I decided to run for office as a small way on my part to serve the community that's given so much to us, so just give back a little bit. And it has not disappointed. Finally, I just want to thank the city solicitor who helped guide me through the nuances of the charter, Stephanie Williams. I want to thank the mayor and President, Mayor Cahill and President Quansey for their support and guidance as well. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank my campaign manager, Judith Cronin, who you know is the Y Director, who happens to also be a former city councilor. So, she's tan, she's rested, maybe she can run, who knows, as her. But also, you saw my wife, Nancy, help me. Without her love and support, none of this would have been possible. I'm just wondering why she always introduces me everywhere we go as her future ex-husband. But anyway, I I want to thank all of of you because what what has happened is not just the working relationship, but the friendships that we formed and developed. So, I'm going to really miss a lot of that. So, I just want to thank everyone for their support, for myself and my family over the years, and on to another chapter. So, thanks again.
Thank you. We still have you for three more meetings, correct?
I missed it.
And we still have you for three more meetings.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, Nancy's telling me to not.
In two in December. Now would be a good time if there are people watching or if they want to watch this, because I've gotten, people have, people have heard that you were stepping down, so people have reached out to me, and I'm sure have reached out to other city councils. But whereas because you did not have an opponent last year, this is how the vacancy will be filled, and it's the charter. Section 2 is about the city council. This is Section 211C, and it's filling of vacancies by the city council. When it wherever, whenever a vacancy shall occur in the office of Councilor Lodge or in that of Ward Councilor, and there is no available candidate to fill such a vacancy in the manner provided in Section 2-11A or B, and that would be if Counsel Brady's had an opponent in the previous election, and they had a certain percentage of the votes, they would be asked to fill the remaining of his term. But we don't have that. So, it all falls on us. The vacancy shall be filled by the remaining members of the city council. Persons elected to fill a vacancy by the city council shall serve only until the next regular election, at which time the vacancy shall be filled by the voters, and the person chosen to fill such vacancy shall forthwith be sworn and shall serve for the remainder of the unexpired term in addition to the term for which elected. Person serving a city council's under this section shall not be entitled to have the words "candidate for reelection" printed against their names on the election ballot. So, whoever we appoint is allowed to run next term, but they would not be candidate for reelection, and it comes down to a vote of the eight remaining city councils to decide on who will fill Counsel Brady's. Huge, huge shoes. So, I would ask if anybody's, if to my fellow counselors and to anybody watching at home, if if you're interested in the position, please send a email or a letter to our city clerk, uh, Ms. Lisa Kent, and she can get that out to all of us, and then we'll make a decision before the end of the year, hopefully. Sound good, everyone? Great. Anybody have anything to add before we move on? Council Rand?
Well, I guess I want to say thank you for, um, just being such an easy person to work with and bringing, um, in different times, always bringing a handshake to our meeting, greeting people, greeting each counselor at the beginning of each meeting with a lightheartedness. And, um, you know, I, I think it's been a pleasure to serve with you, and I've really enjoyed even the moments where we've disagreed. And I think it's, it speaks a lot to your character that we can disagree and still be friends. So, um, and also welcome to the neighborhood. So, thank you.
And we are definitely going to have to, I don't know how we're going to do it, but we need a team photo so that we can put it up in the, in our committee room, because there's a picture of, uh, a young John Freyde sitting at a table surrounded by a bunch of old guys and, uh, Mayor, former Mayor Jack Monahan from 32 years ago. So, uh, we have to get that at some point. Uh, thank you, everybody. Uh, there was an election last week, and I think we'd be amiss if we didn't congratulate President-elect Joe Biden. Uh, we wish him the best, as well as his Vice President Kamala Harris. Uh, I'm sure that we're all glad that the election is over, uh, and we'll move on to 2021. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. So moved. Second. Second.
A roll call for the papers.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
I'm going to miss you, Brady, Mr. Freyde.
Yes, so, thanks.
Yes.
Rand?
Serving with the job.
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Quansey?
Yes, thank you, everyone. Uh, we are adjourned. Good night, all. Thanks again, Council Freyde's.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Bye, thank you.